I'd like to welcome you to our September 12th, 2024 council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allowed three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government, and we ask that you please silence all electronic devices at this time. With that, I'll call this council meeting to order. I'd like to ask that we all please stand for our invocation. I'd like to invite Pastor Randy Law from Intercession City Church of God to come and lead us in our invocation. Please remain standing afterwards for our pledge of allegiance.
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Father, in the name above all names, I ask, Lord, that you give this council, Father, wisdom in the decisions that they have to make, Lord. Father, only you know what the future holds. I ask, Father, that they, Lord, reverence you in all the decisions that they make, that they be decisions that are for the community, Lord, for the youth, for the generations to come. Father, give them wisdom that you can give, in Jesus's name.
Amen. Please show me on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Would like to ask Manager Miller if there are any changes that you or corrections you'd like to make to our agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I would like to ask if we could please continue Public Hearing Number 7, Ordinance 24-51 to the October 10th, 2024 City Council Meeting. And that is all.
Thank you. Item number seven under public hearing will be continued.
Well, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That's a public hearing, so we'll need to be right in, and then you'll need to have a motion to continue it.
On the proclamations you're saying? No, on this, it's we're continuing?
Yes.
Okay. Can I just go ahead and do that now?
Well, yeah, just have the clerk read in item seven.
Could I have a motion for continuing item number seven under public hearings, hearing ordinance number 2024-51? Do I have a motion for continuance?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion.
Before you vote, Mayor, can we just have the clerk read it into the record?
Oh, I'm getting all kinds of corrections tonight. Madam Clerk, could you please read that item into the record, please?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-51 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Chapter 3, Performance and Siding Standards by amending Article 14 titled Use Regulation Sections 3.14.23 of the Land Development Code to update siding standards for mini warehouse and storage facilities, providing for separability, scribners, error, conflict, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion for continuance to October the 10th from Councilmember Gilbert. We have a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And item number seven is continued to October 10th. Under presentations, first of all, we have a proclamation and recognition of Constitution Week. Could I have a motion that we accept and present this proclamation tonight?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. We have a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
We'll let you read that in just a moment, but could we also have a motion for the acceptance and presentation of proclamation and recognition of veterans of foreign wars day? Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
We'd like to ask Mr. Urban, if you will, please read the proclamation on Constitution Week and present it to our distinguished group here tonight.
All right. Do we have any representatives here for Constitution Week that would like to come up? Or, yeah, come on up. Sure you got this right, or? Whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 22nd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Colby Urban, council member, along with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2024 to be Constitution Week in the City of St. Cloud, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the idea that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. It's like a rose, a thorn among the roses. Mr. Fletcher, would you like to present to us the proclamation recognition of veterans of foreign wars day?
What a great way to start the meeting, huh? If representatives from the VFW would like to join me up here, please? Whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars was founded on September 29th, 1899, making this the 125th anniversary of the organization, and whereas members of the VFW have served honorably defending the United States of America in her military, in the United States Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Coast Guard, and Space Force, and whereas the VFW's mission is to foster camaraderie among United States veterans of overseas conflicts, to serve our veterans, the military, and our communities, and to advocate on behalf of all veterans. And whereas the City of St. Cloud, Florida was founded by veterans of the Civil War and continue to embrace all its veterans who have nobly served this country. Now therefore, I, Sean Fletcher, council member, along with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 29th, 2024 to be Veterans of Foreign Wars Day in the City of St. Cloud, and urge our citizens to stand with the VFW to ensure veterans are respected for the sacrifices they and their loved ones have made on behalf of this great country.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank all of you for your service. Thank you. And if there are any other veterans in here, we thank all of you for your service to our country. The next item on our agenda is our Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda has provided this opportunity to address the City Council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, we ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Joe, is it Thrower?
Sir.
Okay, is that, I got it?
Yes, sir. Throw baseball.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Over the past week, you've probably seen an email floating around from me. Today, I was told my, a couple of my neighbors, they sent emails as well. My name's Joe Thrower. I live at 521 Clay Drive, St. Cloud, one of the last communities down in that area that's still on subdick. Everybody around us, all the new buildings, all the new codes, all bring their sewage and water straight into y'all's system. We do have water through you guys, but our sewer system is right on property. Over the past couple of weeks, we've been having quite a bit of rain, and with the communities building around us, it's causing our drainage to back up, which in turn is causing our subdick to not function. It's heartening, disheartening for me because I have a wife that is going through some things cancer-wise, and when she needs to use the facilities, I like to be there, but unfortunately, when they don't work, we gotta find other means. I'm not really the one to gripe, but I've worked for Osceola County for 22 years as an inspector. I was a stormwater inspector a number of those years, and I understand, you know, what goes on with water and how things go, but we're getting out of control, especially on Michigan with the new houses in Skylake being built, the ones out in Furtis property over to the east of us, and everything migrates over to us. Where the old airfield, airfield used to be, that used to take a tremendous amount of our water, and used to take it right down that ditch line. It used to go straight. Now it turns in a lot of different directions, and it's not being maintained. All we ask in our community, and you're gonna hear a bunch of them ask, is, you know, we were promised a few years back that we would have our ditches cleaned and culverts and structures put in between our properties. Back in 2010, David and Rebecca was done. We had ours, our area was surveyed out. We had structures in place, and they were going to do the work. At that time, they came and pulled what they had left on the ground and said there wasn't no funding, that the funding was needed elsewhere. Well, I was an inspector. I asked around, and I found out where it is. I'm kinda disheartened where it went, and I'll be happy to talk offline where I know it went. That way, don't get bottled up within the city. But Ms. Matheny and I spoke. Colby, Mr. Urban came to my house and spoke to me, and Kevin actually came to my house to see what we have. So there's obviously a problem. All we ask is, do your due diligence, help us, and try to slow down the growth, let's at least do the drainage roadway before we put any more houses on that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, would you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Want to trust this?
So Mr. Thrower, after Mr. Felblinger went to your property, he did make some short-term commitments, and also I have some long-term, hopefully with council approval. In the short term, our operations division is coming out cleaning any blockages along their ditches and openings and crossings, also reaching out to the homeowners association for Skylakes and to our code enforcement to get the ditches within that, those HOA tracks maintained at a higher level than they're currently being maintained at. You are correct. I don't, I don't know what the reasoning was why they removed the funding, but Mr. Felblinger did, did confirm that that did happen, and so he's estimating it's about $150,000 for us to pipe the southern side of the road, and we think that we would be able to start this in the new year with the council's support. Obviously, we'd have to do budget amendment, budget transfer, work with our finance department, but he does believe that we would be able to fund it with some of our stormwater funds if, if council would like that.
Will you bring that recommendation back then after you?
Well, if you give me consensus, we will just start moving forward with it. Okay, thank you.
Are there any objections? There aren't any objections, so.
So, real quick, I appreciate they did come out, and they did do some cleaning in front. The ditches did not get cleaned, make that clear. They just cleaned out in front of the culvert pipes, which is fine. That'll take the hydraulic pressure out of the pipes and push the water to the next, but with all that material that's still in the ditch, we're still gonna have a backup, no matter. And across the street on Furtis, across from, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with the area, and I know I'm beating it in time, and I apologize, but across from Miss Slade Clark's mama's old house, the one right there on the corner of Clay, that ditch on the other side of the road needs to be maintained. It hasn't been maintained since I was with the county, and that was almost 12, 14 years ago. So we really need to have something done because that takes a lot of our water as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Bonsek.
Yes?
If you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
If you come to the mic, we can.
Mark Bonsek, 801 Louisiana Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. Okay, I'm here tonight to request that the city take over control of the monthly market from the Downtown St. Cloud Business Group, Inc. The reason for this is I have spent six months trying to apply to be a vendor. I've been accused of being a liar, of being nasty. We've had some pretty nasty incidents, and during this whole time, never had a personal contact. You answer to an email address. You get an email that is unsigned, never attached a name, until by accident, when I paid my fee, I paid by PayPal. That was the only way that I knew that it was going to St. Cloud Downtown Businessmen's Group because I got my receipt from PayPal. Doing a little research online, I was able to go to the state and find out who the actual officers and people were of this organization. I actually have names now. Took me six months. They've been rude. They've been obnoxious. Don't get me wrong, I've been to this Wednesday night market. It's fantastic. My wife and I had attracted us to move here. My friends said, "The mark, the stuff you make, we'd like you to be part of this," but I've run into a wall with these people. I was by chance, ran into a man named Robert Beuchamp, who's been a 40-year businessman in the area, and he is the ex-treasurer of this group. And once he found out of my plight, he's the one that encouraged me to come here and say, "Please, get the city to take over this fabulous event before the people running it destroy it." And I still got another minute, but we don't want to go into every little story. If you guys are interested, I will leave my phone number with the clerk, and maybe somebody else gets another 50 seconds. How's that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And could you just make a note to follow up that, see what the problem is, if there's anything we can do?
Oh, I can look at it. They have also reached out to me separately. It's, it's not our event. In fact, we've actually been separating from the event now that they are charging a fee. They're gonna be taking over some of the responsibilities that the city was previously doing in the effort that we've had that people should be not having fees waived. So at this point, it's, it's not a city event, and I can't take over another organization's event without their permission.
All right. I understand. We're not asking to take a, we'll, we'll just meet requires, okay?
Spend their permit.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Can I comment, Mayor?
Yes, sir, you may.
Okay. Sir, the market has been beneficial to the city. It is a private market. What, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. But we should accept all vendors in good standing to do that, but we as a whole, as a city, do not have that jurisdiction over that, but we understand your complaints, and we'll have somebody deal with that, but we love the market. The market's great, and we want more vendors. Vendors are good. Vendors are startup companies that end up in the city of St. Cloud, so I hope this could, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir. I've read all the emails. I've done my due diligence. I'm sorry, sir.
This crowd isn't capable of issuing me a refund without me giving me my name and address.
The only thing I would like to tell you is we will, we will, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. It's a great market, but we will try to work with the private entity of the market to get all vendors that want to come and grow the market. So, so thank you very much for what you have, but, but it's a private market, so thank you very much, sir.
To give you an idea, if one vendor took the time to come here, there's probably more of a problem.
All right. Thank you, sir. Darren Davis. Please state your name and address for the record, and you've got three minutes.
Good evening. Darren Davis, Hickory Tree Road. On consent agenda night on item D, y'all are doing a.
Mr. Davis, you need to wait for that item to come up.
I was told I had to come up now.
No, when the consent agenda, we called the mayor.
Well, you need to tell Mr. Tomac that. He told me I had to come up and have it pulled.
Mr. Davis, you can, when the mayor calls.
If you could be seated, we'll get to that item in just a moment, okay?
All right. I just wanted to get it pulled, that's all.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizens Forum on any item not on the If not, we move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they will be given the same opportunity. First, I'd like to ask any of the council members, are there any items on the consent Councilmember Matheny.
Item D for Mr. Davis, and also.
Did you say D?
Yes, D. And item M I wanted to comment on.
Item M?
M.
Then let's move to item D first before we consider the whole agenda. You ready?
I was, I was pulling it for Mr. Davis.
Do what?
I was pulling it for Mr. Davis.
Okay. Mr. Davis, you'll step up and speak to that?
Good evening again. Darren Davis, Hickory Tree Road. On item D, it is a lot grading, new engineering specifications, standards, and all this. Are they gonna put a maximum elevation on new subdivisions coming in? Are they gonna put any regulations on how high they can be above the 100-year floodplain, standards of drainage, or any of that?
I don't think we can answer that. If you'll just continue talking about what your concerns are, we'll refer that to the right people. I know what your concerns are, for sure.
Yeah. I've got subdivisions on two sides right now. One is, some of them are eight to 10 foot above the 100-year floodplain. The other one's probably six to eight foot above the 100-year floodplain, and now everybody else around it is suffering for it. All their water runs out of their ground, sheet flows into the lower ground, and everybody's having water problems, just like when Mr. Thrower was in here. When they have this new subdivision put in on Michigan, he's even gonna be worse because there's probably no elevations on the engineering far as regulations. It's probably a good idea if they would do something like Deltona and the rest of them are doing, saying, "Okay, we know everybody wants to be up, dry, safe, but there's realistic levels that they need to go by. There's no use to go 10 foot above the 100-year flood." I mean, it's just, it's just crazy. Besides the cost of the filter, besides all the roads and everything they tear up, bring it in, and, you know, all that, it's, it's not cost-effective. I don't think they really gain anything by doing the elevation that way. Only thing I was told is to give them more houses because the footprint of the pond went smaller because it was deeper. But I would appreciate it if y'all could take it into consideration while you're doing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So that, you know, what Mr. Davis has experienced and others is a reason that I asked for this to like look at the land development code and look if there's things we can do to help harmonize the grading better because it is, it is unfortunate. I've seen it a lot in my job, and I've seen it a lot in the city where it's like the existing, the existing homes, I'll hear, "Well, they'll, they'll develop eventually." I'm like, but that's, that's not the way you should look at that. It should be like, it should work for everyone. And I mean, I like the idea. I don't mind postponing because this really is my item that I brought forward, and if Mr. Davis had comments that he wants us to look at, I'm, I'm fine with continuing it if the other council members are okay with it.
Mr. Ben Terris?
Well, just generally speaking, several years ago, the city went to this process, which is what we're talking about with regard to these specific technical standards, because the city at the time realized that these technical standards evolve and they move, and the ordinance process to re-adopt them was a little bit too complicated and took too much time. So you, in theory, could adopt this particular item and then work with staff to adopt, to address the issue that you're talking about in a subsequent resolution, so.
Or could we just postpone it and work on it?
You could do that. You could do that way, too.
I mean, I think if we adopt it, it kinda like goes on the back of the queue.
Kevin, does it, does it, does it address? I'm sorry.
I'm sure, I don't think it has like a maximum in there.
Ms. Miller, go ahead.
Kevin? Sorry. Kevin Public Works Director. No, it does not have a specific maximum height. It does, as you go higher, it does have different, the different landscaping requirements, that sort of stuff, to be able to be able to help try to minimize the impacts of the adjacent properties, but there is not a maximum height restriction in this ordinance.
Right. I mean, I would like to postpone it, to work on the language if everybody was amenable to it.
Can that just be a consensus?
Well, no, you need a motion to continue.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue this item to work on additional refinement.
I'll second. Motion for Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second for Councilman Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
It will be pulled and worked on.
Is there any chance I could add something to that?
If you'll make it quick.
Okay. Another thing that might add to that ordinance is like on the ditch cleaning and stuff like they were talking about, maybe they can add something into that to where the development would have to take care of the onsite and inside ditches to make sure they stay clean because like Gramercy there, they bought it in like 2006, 2007, and the ditches have never been touched on the outflow of it at all. There's never been a machine in them. They've never sprayed them. They've never done anything. You can't even tell where they're at. They're overgrown that much. And that would be a good thing to put to it. And on this ordinance you're doing tonight, I was talking to Mr. Tomac about it, and they were talking about doing fences. If this subdivision was 10 foot higher than this one, the fence would have to go up on this side, and it would have to be like six foot higher than they are. In my case, you'd have a 10-foot wall with a six-foot fence on top of it. So to have a 16-foot-high barrier between me wouldn't be all bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, could we look into the ditches inside of Gramercy to see if we can? I, I believe since I've been on council like, like eight years. believe since I've been on council like, like eight years ago or something, we had to intercede and force them to clean their ditches, and so maybe we'll have to do it again.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it, thank you.
Ms., Councilmember Matheny, would you like to?
Item M.
Are we done now?
No, I need M.
M, let's go to that then.
Um, I was just confirming with the city manager and, and just want to kind of say it aloud, that I saw we have this contract with ScanSCO, when I read it, it said, oh, with something.
Go ahead, I, I jumped ahead myself, go ahead, but I'll come back to it.
Oh. Um, I saw that it says project management, and I just wanted to make sure that was construction engineering inspection, um, so we have like a full-time CEI on the project like we needed in our downtown project, you know, it's a very large project, let's make sure we have full-time CEI assigned to it. She's confirmed that it does, but I just want to say, let's, if it doesn't, we need to revisit this, I, I didn't get that out of what, what I read, um, but I'm glad to see that we've got ScanSCO on board to help monitor this construction.
Good. Where I dropped the ball here, we have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. I don't think we voted on that, did we?
I don't think we did.
I don't think you did, no.
I don't think we did.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Mr. Gilbert, to pull Resolution Number 2024-143R, item D.
We can do it again, but we already did it.
Did we vote on that?
We voted? Yes.
I'm getting old.
Let's go to the videotape.
Getting old. All right. I did it right, sir, I went, uh. Would anyone else in the auditorium like to speak to any item that's on the consent If not, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda?
A motion to approve, except for D that we've already voted on.
Right. We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. The next item on tonight's agenda are public hearings. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number one into the record?
First of two public hearings for Resolution Number 2024-119R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final ad valorem tax mileage for the City of St. Cloud for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, the same being adopted prior to the adoption of a final budget for said period.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director, uh, this is the first required hearing for the final ad valorem tax mileage. We're proposing that the rate stay the same, 5.1128 for the 12th year in a row. It is a 7.69 percent, uh, above the rolled-back rate, which is 4.7479. Uh, the rolled-back rate is, um, shown to you there, the definition of, of the rolled-back One mil equals $1 in tax per $1,000 of assessed value. Uh, property taxes are multiplied by the assessed taxable value by the mileage rate and divided by 1,000, so there's an example. Um, here's the history of the last several years of the ad valorem, um, mileage rate and the rolled-back rate. And this is an example of, uh, a property with 250,000 in assessed value would have the average yearly tax cost for city taxes of $1,278. The highlights of what we need the mileage tax rate for, 19.8 percent increase in personnel costs, uh, due to the items listed there, pay adjustment for staff to keep up with cost of living, um, 13 new and six newly funded, uh, PD positions, uh, increase in health insurance costs, those continue to rise, and in, increase in our pension contribution costs as well. Here's the detail of all the positions that we're proposing to be funded. And these are some positions in the other funds which aren't related to the ad valorem, but for informational purposes, two for sanitation and three for stormwater. And we're recommending approval, uh, staff recommends approval, and we're recommending that you approve, and this is the first reading, so you don't have to vote this time. The next reading will be next Thursday at 6:30 PM.
No, you actually do have, do need to take approval.
Yes. You do? Okay, for the first reading.
So you're, what you're doing is you're approving the tentative mileage rate, then the final action will be at, uh, next week.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and our motion by council, Councilmember Gilbert.
Um, I'm glad that we can keep this mill at, at this point, as we grow and as the services continue to grow. I'd just like to recognize that this may have to increase in years to come, I know it's not a popular thing, but, uh, I'm happy that the city can keep the mill where it's at and, and the cost of living where it's at because of all the other increases that they have. I yield back, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I just want to confirm that this has the changes I requested to cover the additional insurance costs for the employees.
Yes, it does.
Any other questions from council? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of Resolution 2024-119R? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher, second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, could you please read, I mean, call the, the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I need you to sit down for just a moment. Is Carol Moffett here? Carol Moffett here? She had requested to speak during the consent agenda, I thought I gave opportunity, but I didn't realize she had filled out a request, and so she's not here. All right. We'll move on then. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number two into the record?
First of two public hearings for Resolution Number 2024-120R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a, establishing a final budget for the City of St. Cloud for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, the same being adopted following the adoption of the final mileage rate for said period.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director, again, this is our fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget resolution. In summary, for the background, the revenues have to equal expenditures. Uh, our total revenue for this fiscal year is 273.5 million, um, detailed across the different funds as, as you can see, 80.8 million for the general fund. As you can see, the capital projects fund is, uh, larger than normal, uh, so we are funding, um, numerous, uh, public safety, um, projects to include two fire stations and public safety complex phase one. Uh, this is a breakdown of the revenues in the general fund, 80.8 million, uh, approximately a third of that comes from ad valorem. Uh, another approximate third of that comes from other financing sources, and that encompasses the OUC revenue sharing, which is almost $13 million now, and also from TOHO revenue sharing, uh, is over $2 million. And then we also have the, uh, utility tax fund is included in that as well, so those are our major revenue sources. As far as expenditures go, you can see the breakdown, uh, fire department and police department, uh, between the two, they make up about almost 56 percent of the general fund budget, uh, with parks and rec being, uh, 10.2 million of the 80.8, and most of the remainder being government services, and so that includes finance, human resources, procurement, city manager's office and so forth, more of the administrative functions. Here's general fund, uh, departmental operating budgets, uh, breakdown by department, and as you can see, and we're very proud of this fact, that all departments worked diligently to, um, maintain or in many cases decrease their budgets, so we actually have an operating budget decrease of 1 percent. These are parts of our budget that support the different key focus areas, so diversity and magnetic economic development, these are all the items that are included in the budget that are in support of that. And then we have effective community safety, uh, the additional positions that were mentioned, the additional projects, new fire engine, new ambulance, and a significant stormwater project at Tennessee Avenue and 17th Street. High-performing government, uh, 23 total new positions, a new fire union contract, which will be coming to you in October, as I understand it, uh, and as you can see, the rest of the items, um, there. An effective transportation network, uh, which is important to, uh, everyone in the city, as you can see, the projects that are funded as part of this budget, uh, which will help with traffic, road paving, uh, and so forth. And again, staff recommends approval, and we're requesting your approval of Resolution 2024-120R, and this is first hearing as well.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and our motion by council, Councilmember Fletcher.
Uh, Councilmember Gilbert was first.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. This is the first time in a long time I've heard a decrease, uh, a, a, as a citizen of the city in the United States, the increase has been significant to all the families, so I'd like to thank you and your finance department to lowering the budget and lowering costs for the citizens because, as you know right now, increase in, in everything, so I'd just like to thank you for the wonderful job you did with your staff, so I yield back to you, Mayor.
Thank, thank the city manager and all my fellow directors, I honestly had nothing to do with it. They, they all worked diligently to-
You just had to report it?
-fine-tune their budgets. I appreciate the comment, but all I do is put the numbers together, but thank, thank you on behalf of all of us.
He does a lot.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Um, I just wanted to echo the, the, the same comments, I, we had the opportunity to sit down and, and draft the city's, uh, strategic plan, um, this is the budget, uh, coming forward to, to take on the priorities and responsibilities and the items that we detailed, um, in that strategic plan, um, the amount of stuff that we've been able to accomplish in the last, um, at least since, since I, you know, we've been sitting up here, this, this seated council, um, has been quite vast and, and, and a lot, a lot of stuff, uh, good things are coming, and I appreciate all the hard work of, of city staff to be able to, to move these items along in a efficient, um, manner, um, for the citizens, so thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment? If not, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of this Resolution 2024-120R?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gilbert, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
If you could please read item three into our record.
Public hearing for Resolution Number 2024-144R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Resolution Number 2023-154R, which adopted the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified there are prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional fundings in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director, one last time, uh, this is budget amendment number five of our current fiscal year 2023, 2024, and the city manager has certified funds are available to appropriate for the following projects. Uh, we're obtaining a Florida government finance commission, commission loan for the purchase, uh, and renovation of the property and buildings located at 3101 Progress Lane, that is for a total of $8 million, and we're increasing revenue from prior year fund balance and city health insurance contributions for Fund 520 Self-Insurance Health Fund for increased medical claim costs that we've, uh, endured this fiscal year for $1.7 million. And that is all. Uh, so we're, staff are recommending approval of this resolution, and we're requesting that city council approve Resolution 2024-144R.
Mr. Benzer?
Yeah, and I was going to mention it under my report piece, but since we talked about the 3101, 3101 progress purchase, we, just will let the council know, we have met all the conditions of that purchase and sale agreement, uh, the appraisal and, uh, the title work has all been reviewed, and we are set to close and we'll proceeding with closing on that on, uh, a week from today, so, um, that transaction will complete.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to item number three? If not, we'll have discussion and our motion from council?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Madam Clerk, could you please read, read item number four into our record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-49, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 10.31 acres identified as Clark property from A agricultural zoning designation to R-1B, single-family dwelling zoning designation with a low-density residential future land use designation, generally located south of Furtick Road, east of Michigan Avenue, providing for the entering, the designation of the official zoning map and filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication, suburbility and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Dunklin.
Thank you. Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. The case before you tonight is for a zoning map amendment for the project known as Clark The exist, existing zoning designation is agriculture, the requested zoning designation is R1B, single-family, um, which is consistent with the existing land use of low-density residential. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and zoning maps depicting the low-density residential land use and the exist, existing agricultural zoning district for context. Honor before July 25th, 2024, staff recommended approval, planning commission also recommended approval. Likewise, it is requested that city council approve ordinance number 2024-49 for the zoning map amendment known as the Clark property. At this time, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Jesse Anderson, 2602 East Livingston, Orlando, Florida, planner from Pulis and Bennett, representing Forestar. We don't have anything specific to add, our staff did a great job, but we'd love the opportunity to answer any questions that you may have or that the public may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you remain ready for that. This time we'll have public comment. Sam Does, is that correct? If you'll state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Sam Does, I live at 531 Michigan Estates Circle, um, right here in St. Cloud. So, um, I represent not just myself and our home, but also, uh, the homeowners association for the Michigan Estates Circle, um, homeowners. Uh, our concern with this property is that there, and the development of this property is that right now, um, the agricultural use fits in perfectly with what's going on, and it's mainly has to do with, as mentioned earlier, the drainage in the area is already encumbered, um, and we have not begun to feel the brunt of that until Sky Lakes is fully developed. It doesn't take a hurricane anymore in order, or that amount of rain in order to have- It doesn't take a hurricane anymore in order, or that amount of rain, in order to have impacts on Michigan Avenue. It's all open drainage, and that water really doesn't have much place to go. With all the impervious proposed for a project like this to get this intensity of use, South Florida would require a stormwater pond with pre-post, but they're always gonna require an outfall. And that outfall is gonna go where, right? Like, right now, it perks into the ground. At some point, it's gonna go either to the road or into the conservation area around our neighborhood. So for that, that reason, that's one main reason, but also, traffic right now is, is really terrible along there. We're not, it's not just serving us and our neighbors and adjourning, adjoining communities, subdivisions, but the high school, the middle school, the elementary school. There are certain times in the day where you just cannot go on Michigan, or you will be trapped for at least forty-five minutes of your life. And so, in their traffic, I know they, they have a traffic impact study. There's, there's points on this that I think are subjective and pretty moot. They, they say that it operates at an adequate level of service and is projected to continue to do so at the build-out of the development, which I completely disagree with. As I stated, Sky Lakes is not even twenty-five, thirty percent completed yet, and there's gonna be over three hundred and fifty-five lots there. That's two cars apiece. Where are they gonna go? These times of day, it's, it's really gonna be more of an encumbrance. There's other aspects of this that I could go through. I, myself, am a professional engineer. I work for a leather local jurisdiction in the area, so I can speak with knowledge on the technical aspects of this. But from a drainage standpoint and a traffic standpoint, it doesn't really make sense. So it meets the criteria, just in closing, just like tomatoes meet the criteria of a fruit, but the wisdom is you don't put it in fruit salad, right? The environment's not conducive to it right now. Unfortunately, it's just not a good idea.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Maureen Furtick.
Maureen Furtick at two oh three Furtick Road. I'm gonna let my son do my time. Jerram Furtick.
Alright, Jerram Furtick.
Can we start the clock again? Jerram Furtick, fifty Furtick Road. Before I get asked that, Dan, I know you're going for it. How you doing, Dan?
I'm doing good, you?
Good. Hey, so, quick question on Michigan. Has anyone drove down it lately when the rain happens? So have you seen the flooding that's going on in Michigan? Right in the school zone, right in the sidewalks that kids can't go across? That's already failing. So development coming in to a new area, we know South Water Management's supposed to contain the water on the project. You're our voice to cover the rest of it. So outside the project, we're asking you to look at the project as a whole, not just this one, but this is personally affecting us, but all projects that come in, the water flow is an issue. If there is no game plan and no planning for drainage, there needs to be a real big workshop and take some of that money out of the budget, start working on drainage, especially on main roads like your, your schools, because how many schools let out on that? Quite a few. So I got a couple pictures. I'm gonna put in exhibit. So I was told the water goes east to west, from east to west. The project you're about to look at is the trees on the right side of the picture. The water looks like it's moving, so west is towards the trees. Water's sitting there still today, trying to go east. So I think y'all need to look at your, your plans on sheet flow, because if you're trying to put all the water towards a pond on the opposite side of the property, I don't know how you're gonna do that, if you're gonna raise up the dirt, mess up sheet flow and keep it coming the way to the east. So that's one picture. The other picture, if you don't mind putting up. So that's the project in yellow to give y'all a visual on it. The, the green is my mom's piece that she gave me her time for. So the blue is where the puddling was, the water's sitting. So, and then like that red little squiggle up there where Furtick meets Michigan, you can't see the, anybody coming down the road. That needs to be adjusted if y'all are gonna do a development here. It's a blind left turn. And that's for kids on bikes, that's for people in cars, buses. You, you have to pull all the way out into the crosswalk, block the crosswalk to be able to turn out. That's not even at school time. At school time, it gets even worse, because now you have cars stopped in front of it, and you're trying to get past it. So you can see the red and the blue lines, that is two other entities that own there, and I think one's here to speak. No one's developing in that area. Do I still got my three minutes?
Yes, go ahead.
Alright, thank you. So the, the red and blue are just separate owners, so that's not development. So I'm curious, on the plan on zoning, I was told that the easement, y'all are trying to make the developer push a road through on Delaware. And if, if so, can I get that answer, yes or no? But I think the bigger picture of this, you can see the big blue circle on Michigan, that is where the road floods across every time. If you wanna ever see it come after a good rain, you will see kids trying to make it through the subdivision water there. So as, you know, as I talked about earlier, the pond that their developer wants to put in, the mitered end goes underneath the road and dumps back into the flooding that you already have. So your master plan for where this water pops off, off-site, is not gonna help y'all in the long run. So I don't know what the answer is. I don't think there's a quick, easy answer, but the concerns we have with development coming in, it's nothing new, but it's getting worse. So we want your ear, your thoughts, and what's the rush to develop if we already have issues? So if we're gonna zone something in, zoning is what we're talking about tonight, but this is the first steps of the couple of readings. This is the only time we get to speak on any development. So that's why we're trying to hit this ahead, get you to think, come look at the property, see what you're about to zone in. What's, what's wrong with tabling something and learning what you're zoning in on projects? You know, as a council member, I know you all take it seriously, but take your time, go visit some of these sites and put your feet on the ground and look and see what you're zoning in on a project. The other concern I have is they're putting two outlets onto Furtick Road. Why do we need two outlets for thirty houses? The question I have is, here we have eighty houses at Michigan Estates. So now, not talk about the neighborhood, but you have people running stop signs constantly, right? It's just human nature, because it's a dead-end road. Now you're gonna put two more entrances where people can run stop signs and cause problems on a road. Why not put one like they have designed straight across the entrance like they have to Michigan Estates, put a dead end in there, less traffic coming out on the road? At least it's contained in one area where people know where to look in one spot. So these are concerns, so flooding. Easement, if I can get an answer on, if y'all are trying to push Delaware through, I would like to have that answered tonight, because it makes a bigger difference if I come to any other meetings. Because if you are, just look where that green line goes. My mom owns that whole land, no one's developing there. I won't talk for the person that's in red, that he's gonna come up and speak for himself, but there's no development there, so why are you trying to push more roads to go nowhere? If you are trying to push that through. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Furtick. Seth Furtick.
Seth Furtick, fifty-five Furtick Road. And just going back on to what he has put up there, it is a blind turn coming out to the left, horrible, and the water is gonna be your issue. It's just not flowing like it did before. I mean, we build up all the way around, so it's just, we need to look at either widening that canal through Sky Lake, I don't know what your answer is. I know y'all put Culverton on the other side of Furtick, closed all that up, which we know Culverton doesn't fill as much as Open Dish does sometimes. So, and like to know about Delaware, too. I, I just don't see pushing Delaware through to a dead end to a dead end, because even if you push it to West Nolte, it's just going out to the right and coming in from the right. So I don't see the issue of making them put two entrances on that development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furtick. Scott Glasscock.
Scott Glasscock, four oh one Clay and three oh seven four, south of Delaware. I'm the red square that Jerram was talking about, and I own a home across the street on Delaware. My concern, I, I understand people want to do stuff with their property, and I get that. That yellow rectangle, when they build it, it will not be at the same elevation, I promise you. So they will be dry, and my property will be underwater for six months out of the year. When we were forced to annex into the city, we were told our taxes wouldn't go up, they went up three times. I have two properties bordering Delaware. If Delaware is made a road, which we begged them not to put gravel in it, because it would increase traffic, but we felt that we had to do that. If that is paved, that will be nothing but a highway for people trying to butt-line to get to the school. It will be a speed zone for every road that connects to Michigan, for someone trying to beat someone through the light to get two cars in front, so they can pick up their kid before everybody else. It is, if you haven't sat there at seven o'clock in the morning, get behind the other people that are parked on Clay Drive, waiting to get in line to go to the schools. It's a nightmare. The traffic, I saw we have a Michigan pedestrian plan. You better have a good one, because people are gonna get run over. You can't come up with a good enough plan to keep that from happening. You know what a nightmare it is already. Please do not increase it. There is no need for Delaware to be opened. It's a road to nowhere, except for people trying to get to Michigan, speeding through places where they already don't need to be, and someone's gonna get hurt. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Glasscock. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Would the applicant like to address any of the questions or issues that have been brought before, before we have the discussion, my counsel?
Yes, please. Thank you. Jesse Anderson, for the record again. For some of the issues, I would like to kinda go in reverse order, I guess, to an extent. So per the Land Development Code range will have to be kept on-site. However, I do wanna note that this is a zoning amendment request tonight, so configuration of the, the site itself is still preliminary, undergoing potential conceptual changes as we conform to and adhere to code requirements while we design our plan sheets. And again, and as if we do get approval tonight, are we going to go forward with those potential subdivision plans, where you would see a preliminary plat and a final plat come before you again? Before those, you will also see tonight that we have issues with transportation from the public, as well as drainage issues. These issues are something that we seek to mitigate for our property, as well as potentially the surrounding areas, through our transportation impact analysis that we'll have to do during the subdivision construction plan level, which will determine what type of improvements would be required at that level. And again, to emphasize this, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan does state at Policy one point one point five that it is through the DRC, which does review, by the way, the preliminary subdivision plans, as you all know, construction plans and final plats, that it is to be through, through the DRC that it shall be reviewed and processed for new developments for impacts on adopted levels of service. So speaking of levels of service tonight, we are at a future land use of low-density residential. The future land use element and its future land use category are what correspond with the level of service. We are not seeking to change that tonight. We're seeking to be compatible with that and just go to R one B residential, which is compatible with that low-density residential future land use. Therefore, it should be consistent with the level of service, which will be assessed through two different stages. There's two different requirements during the preliminary subdivision plan level, as well as the final plat level, in which concurrency will be evaluated in a test format to make sure level of service is not abruptly extended. And if it were to be, we would have to solve for mitigation purposes. Finally, there is the approval process inside of the concurrency management aspect of Article eleven in the Land Development Code, as well as in CIED, which is the capital improvements element, that tests for final development plans, states procedures for concern, or procedures for concurrency determination subject, shall be subject to conditions of having a level of service consistent in place at the time of building permit. That's a little bit of a paraphrase, but it is where you have to have, you can put a condition on this final development order tonight, where we have to have a level of service mitigated by the time we do get building permits, which is a traditional aspect of most rezonings, as well as going through the development process. Any other questions, please feel free to ask, and I would love to answer them. Thank you.
Any other comment from the audience? Not, we'll have a discussion. You've already been up, sir. Any other, anyone who has not addressed this issue, like to speak to this item one more time?
Darren Davis, Hickory Road. I don't know, from what I understand, the gentleman said, they don't have the plans and the engineering or any of this done on this project yet?
Okay. Why would anybody bring this to the council without having the engineering and the statistics of how much water, how much elevation, where it's gonna go to be approved by the council without that information? You're making a decision, which you don't know what's going on. You know, look at grammar see. Oh, it's great, it was the greatest thing that ever hit. It's ten-foot high. It was all approved. And now we gotta live with it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a discussion, a motion by council this time. Councilmember Fletcher?
I'm not sure if Kevin is still here. Maybe the city manager, Dave, could, could answer this question. Isn't one of our capital improvement projects, Furtick Road, with stormwater retention on the west side of that, at the Sky Lake secondary entrance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Matheny.
So, Mr. Davis took, took my point, and what I was gonna talk to council about is, since the mayor and I were on here, we've had these kind of applications come before us, and we don't approve them, because we don't know what they're gonna put on there. You know, we, we've had that happen before, where we've said, we, we're, you know, we're not approving it, because we wanna see what you're putting on here, and residents were concerned, and, and so we postponed it until they could come back with the full set of plans, like what exactly are you building? It is challenging, you know, the more and more developed we get, all the problems, like, exacerbate. You know, even if, even if the development meets all the requirements, he said they keep all the water on-site, that's, I doubt they're keeping all the water on-site. You know, they'll match pre-post, right, which is then gonna go out and tie into the, the system that's already overcapacity. Does it match volume? It matches rate. So that's one of the caveats, you know, it matches the rate. If you imagine a curve, it matches the top of the curve, but then the curve stays high, so the volume of water is more, but the rate is the same. That's what, that's what the permits set. And then you have all this empty property, historically, as development came in, you know, maybe a little more water went on this empty field, and nobody noticed, and maybe a little more water went over here, but as that empty field gets developed, then the water that was stored there that nobody noticed is now displaced out into the road. It, it, it's a challenging, it's a challenging system. You know, I tend to agree with the residents that got up and spoke. I mean, we've heard every time anything comes on Michigan, the, the drumbeat is how bad the road is, how bad the traffic is, and I think, Mr. Urban, even the last time you sat in it, the last time, we had something come forward. But I, I just wanted to talk to council, we have delayed these approvals before and said, no, not until you come back with all the details. I'm more comfortable with that. I feel like it's like this, you know, is it the Hamburglar, it's the promise, you know, we'll do this tomorrow, if you do this today, like- Like, I think it's better if we can review things all at the same time and kind of understand what we're approving.
Counselor member Urban?
This is why I'm thankful to have an engineer on our council to help explain these things.
That's never said anywhere.
Yeah, I would share the same concerns that Deputy Mayor Matheny said. I did want to follow back up with this, this is the Delaware extension. Are there any plans for that?
I have to turn to my planning department. I know we've recently been doing the transportation plan. I think because there's existing right-of-way, that we are keeping it for future interconnectivity to Nolte Road.
Correct. So right now, there's paper right-of-way that goes from Nolte all the way up to Seventeenth Street. Sorry. I meant Ferdick, sorry. In the Transportation and Mobility Master Plan, it does call for improvements to Delaware, but from Seventeenth Street up to Lake Shore. So it's not in the Transportation and Mobility Plan as any type of framework road, but because there is existing right-of-way, we would either need to abandon that right-of-way or they would have to improve that right-of-way when they come in to develop that site.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other questions from counsel?
Mayor, may we respond by any chance?
Yes, I'll allow you to do that.
I appreciate that. Could I invite my engineer up to just speak a little bit on the engineering aspect that we've been going through?
Good evening. Mark Stelly, Poles and Bennett, 2602 East Livingston Street. I did want to address your comment. Did?
Could you speak up a little bit? Some of us.
Sorry. No, you're good. I did want to address your comment. We did provide a conceptual plan with our application. We have looked at the drainage in whole, as well as considering the surrounding areas. I think these things are PSP-related when we get to the preliminary plat to dive into. However, we have taken the opportunity to look through it upfront to ensure that we're comfortable with our development moving forward at the zoning stage. So if there's anything in particular you'd like to talk about, I can go into those. But to say that we have not looked at it would not be accurate. And we have provided the plan to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments from staff, from counsel?
Okay. I would just like, for the record, to point out that any plans that were given to staff may have been in like a pre-application meeting or other side meetings, but there has been no official submittal of the PSP yet.
All right. Mr. Mizera?
And then typically, at the zoning stage, you do not see, in many projects, you do not see specific plans, and they do work through the development review process. I think it's more common now, especially when you get in these smaller, somewhat smaller projects that are more defined as infill projects, that you start needing to see those plans. So if that's something the council would like to see, they've indicated there are some sort of preliminary plans. I don't know how intense or how involved they are, but right now, if that's your option, then you could continue this matter for those items to be brought back before you, at least to get a better understanding of what they're thinking about doing.
Well, I would certainly like to see the plans.
Well, again, to that point, you know, this is a zoning application.
I understand.
We had the opportunity, and we come back forth in front of the council again with our preliminary plat, preliminary subdivision plan at that time. At this point, since, like I said, we've gone through it, we have provided a plan. It wasn't a formal submittal, I agree with that. But we did want to be upfront with staff in terms of what we were providing there. And so moving forward with the zoning is kind of our intent now. And then to move into the preliminary subdivision plan stage, where the opportunity to review these items in detail is the process that we normally go through, is the process that your code dictates. And so that's, we'd like to move forward in that direction.
Mr. Mizera?
And just remember, so before you, this is a zoning application, but your Land Development Code provides 16 criteria that all zoning applications have to make, one of which is related to drainage. So I think what I'm hearing from the council is that the council is not inclined to move this forward tonight based on the information that you've heard, at least with regard to the drainage issue. So I guess this is more to the applicant. I think, to be frank, I think your options are, you either provide some information from a planning perspective or the, if I'm not reading the room right, this might be a denial. So it's your choice how you want to handle it.
I'd recommend a continuance.
That's fine.
Want to vote it down?
That's fine.
So you're continuing, did I hear you correctly?
Yeah, if that's the council's position, yes, that's fine. We'll agree to that.
Well, we can certainly vote it. Are we in favor of continuance?
Yeah, a motion to continue.
Second. A motion for a continuance.
Can we pick a date? You want to try October?
After November.
After November would be absolutely wonderful.
Only because we need to, to avoid having to re-advertising.
All right. November? No, October?
May I just ask a clarifying question? October sounds great. I just had a clarifying question about the parameters of what you're looking for in those plans for just preliminary subdivision plan level versus subdivision construction plan details. Just so we make sure we're hitting the right mark for you all. Is there a way we can work with staff possibly as part of this process to ensure we're getting what we need for you all next hearing?
Sure. They can work with staff.
Definitely.
Thank you.
All right.
If we could find out what level you do want, so staff can work with them on that. Do you want the construction plans or just the PSP is really the lot layout? The construction plans is when the drainage comes into play?
Drainage.
Drainage.
Your issue is drainage, so I think that needs to be the most, so. Okay, so you have a motion on the table, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for continuance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry. I saw you lighting him, Mr. Fletcher.
Sorry about that. If the applicant could reach out to me so that we could set up a time with our public works director so I can sit down and go over the project when you get the drainage stuff. I know there are concerns, and the residents have spoke. I'd like to do that. So if you, you guys could please reach out to City Manager's office so we can set a time up. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for continuance to the October meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor member Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Counselor member Urban?
Aye.
Counselor member Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
So it continues to October 10th.
October 10th. If you'll add that. Thanks, sir. Madam Clerk, could you please read Items 5 and 6 into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-45, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, MDR, to approximately plus minus 178.26 acres identified as Live Oak Lakes, located south of East Earl O'Brien Memorial Highway, west of Nova Road, east of Mossy Vine Avenue, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, suburbilities, copies on files, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-46, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus 178.26 acres identified as Live Oak Lake, from PD zoning designation county to a PUD city zoning designation with a MDR future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2024-45, located at south of East Earl O'Brien Memorial Highway, west of Nova Road, east of Mossy Vine Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, providing for the acceptance of Osceola County Plan Development PD 15-00014, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, suburbility, and effective date.
Good evening, council. Dag Mary Sagara, Deputy Director. In front of you is a request for a future land use designation and a zoning for Live Oak Lake. Staff recommends approval. The property is contiguous and reasonably compact. The annexation of this property was approved by City Council on July 18. It was the city limits, and it is, and it's already within the city limits. This is a location, a depiction of the location of the property depicting that it is contiguous to the city limits, which now is incorporated into the city. The future land use designation for this property is a combination of low-density residential and medium-density residential for the county. It is proposed to have a future land use of medium-density residential city, and the proposed zoning is PD, a plant unit development for the city. It's compatible with the surroundings, and there's no adverse impact. This property, it is fully developed, and we currently are in construction of phases four and five that are also within the city limits. This is a depiction of the future land use map and the zoning map. The total acre of this subdivision is 178 acres and has 329 dwelling units, and the existing density is 3.83 dwelling units per acre. Like I mentioned previously, Live Oak Lakes is already an existing and built-out community. No new development is proposed in connection with this application. This application is in front of you at the, as a combination with the encumbrance annexations. This is a depiction of the master development that was approved by the county that we are adopting with the PUD. And it is staff recommendation of approval. The planning also, the Planning Commission also recommended approval of this request. The transmittal of this item was done in June of this year. We received no comments from the states, and they gave us a favorable to move forward for adoption. It is requested for this council also to approve. The comprehensive plan 2024-45 and the PUD ordinance 2024-46. I'll be, the city is the applicant, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item? Items? Did you say they were here?
The city is the applicant.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not paying attention. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to these two items? We'll have discussion or motion by counsel. What's the pleasure regarding the first item, number 2024-45?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Counselor member Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor member Fletcher. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Counselor member Urban?
Aye.
Counselor member Gilbert?
Aye.
Counselor member Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Got a motion or a discussion regarding item number 2024-46?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Counselor member Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor member Urban. Madam Clerk?
Counselor member Urban?
Aye.
Counselor member Gilbert?
Aye.
Counselor member Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next item on the agenda, number seven, has been read into the record. Will be continued into October 10. Could you please read Items 8, 9, and 10 into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-52, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of Saint Cloud approximately plus minus 0.88 acres identified as La Salle property located at 3150 La Salle Avenue in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-53, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, park and open space to approximately plus minus 0.88 acres identified as La Salle Avenue property located at 3150 La Salle Avenue, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, suburbilities, copies on files, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-54, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus 0.88 acres identified as La Salle Avenue property from IN Institutional County zoning designation to OR open space and recreation city zoning designation with a park and open space future land use designation located at 3150 La Salle Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, suburbility, and effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk?
Thank you. Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. These cases before you tonight are for the annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment for the project known as La Salle Avenue. The request meets both statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County, as it is contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing county future land use is low-density residential with an institutional county zoning designation. What they are proposing is to change their land use to LDR. And, I'm sorry, not LDR. That's on the next slide. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Here's a location map that depicts the location of the subject parcel, which is north of Cypress Avenue and west of La Salle Avenue. The proposed future land use is park and open space, and the proposed zoning is OR, open space and recreation. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and zoning maps depicting the county's low-density residential land use and institutional zoning district for context. On our before July 25, staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval. Likewise, it is requested that City Council approve ordinance numbers 2024-52, 2024-53, and 2024-54 for the annexation, future land use, and zoning map amendments for the project known as La Salle Avenue. And at this time, staff is available for questions, and I believe the application, sorry, applicant is also present tonight. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to speak to this?
Good evening. Mary Solak, 121 South Orange Avenue, Suite 1500 Orlando, Florida. I'm counsel for the applicant. The staff has done a nice job of reviewing these three applications. We didn't have any opposition at the Planning Commission. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you tonight?
If you'll stand ready.
Okay.
If any questions come up. Would any one in the audience like to speak to any of these three items? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by counsel. What is your pleasure regarding the first item, number 2024-52?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Counselor member Matheny. Have a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor member Gilbert?
Aye.
Counselor member Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Counselor member Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could I have a motion for the adoption of the next item, number 2024-53? Motion. Motion from Counselor member Gilbert?
Second.
Have a second from Counselor member Urban. Madam Clerk?
Counselor member Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Counselor member Urban?
Aye.
Counselor member Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And then the final item, number, ordinance number 2024-54. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Counselor member Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor member Fletcher. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Counselor member Urban?
Aye.
Counselor member Gilbert?
Aye.
Counselor member Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, it brings us to item number 11.
Public hearing for Resolution Number 2024-071R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, authorizing the mayor to enter into annexation of small enclaves inter-local agreement between Osceola County, Florida, a political subdivision of the State of Florida and the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, a Florida municipal corporation for annexation of small enclaves for annexation of small enclaves of 110 acres or less known as 2017 exceptions enclave annexation in accordance with the enclave annexation provision of Section 171.046 Florida statutes and providing an effective date.
Hi, good evening, council. This is Dagmar Isagara, Deputy Director. This item in front of you is a continuation from, from a project that was started back in 2014 between Osceola County and the city. It addressed, sorry, 2017. It is in compliance with the joint planning agreement that was executed between the city and the county in 2014. And it addresses the planning basics in it that this also include annexations. Enclaves of 110 acres or less incorporated Osceola County, but it's surrounded with city property. That is the definition of an enclave for the benefit of the public. On June 14th of 2018, this council approved resolution 2018-023, which make reference to the parcels as the, as the parcels that are in front of you tonight, they were referenced at that time as future phase to be determined. So we are now at this future phase. Those parcels have been incorporated into the current 2017 exception enclave annexation list and they are to be annexed through this resolution of 2024-71R. This is a depiction of the location of the areas that we are proposing to annex. The yellow or green, as you say, the green area is our group A, which was part of the to be determined or to be brought up at the future. And also the orange group C was also part of that group from 2018.
Group B.
That was to be determined in the future. Group B?
You said orange is B.
Orange is B.
You said C.
Oh, sorry, B. Sorry, B. We are also including on this, in this annexation, two portions south of Bellatera to correct a, an escrower's error, or not escrower's error, as I should say, it was a legal description error. So this will, will include those little portions of, at the bottom of Bellatera next to the lake. It is staff recommending approval of this resolution. One point to mention is that this agreement is to be heard by the, by the county in December. So at this point, all we are asking for this council is to accept the agreement. Once the city accepts the agreement, it will go in front of the Board of County Commissioners in December. Once the, the county of commissioner approves it or accepts it, then the properties will be annexed. But today is only, we're just asking the council to accept the agreement under this resolution.
But the agreement does annex these properties?
It does annex.
Yeah, there's not going to be a subsequent annexation.
Exactly. There's not going to be a, thank you for the clarification, City Manager. Yes, this ILA, this agreement will annex the properties, but it will get annexed.
It will take effect until the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll, I'll, this, the, the city is the applicant. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, we'll take public comment. Ron Loper. Please state your name and address, please.
My name's Ron Loper, 290 Orange Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm not quite sure, maybe this young lady here can identify whether my property is one of the annexed properties.
Can I keep your address?
290 Orange Avenue. You guys did the prayer. You guys did the pledge allegiance, the proclamation, proclamation of the veterans of foreign wars and the proclamation of the.
Constitution.
Constitution. Okay. Very good. We've had a good, we've had a good life here in St. Cloud. I've been here for 40 years and I haven't been in council chambers here like this in a long time, since I was a business owner. And I moved here, I'm in the county, and I imagine there's a lot of people that might want to be annexed in, okay? If I'm on that property, I'm requesting you honor my constitutional rights and keep me off of that list. I do not want to be in the city limits. I want to remain in the county where I've been for the last 40 years. I don't need any extra services. I never have, never will. So I'm asking you guys to stand up for what you guys approved tonight, which is the constitution. We are, I'm a small person anymore. I'm not a big business owner. I don't have a lot, a lot of pull. I used to know everybody. I don't know nobody no more hardly. So I'm asking you, if you're going to do this, if I'm on that list, I would like to be removed from that list. And that's, you know, you guys are the ones that are in control. You've just come a long way. You've got more things and better things to do than deal with an annexation of a little half-acre, .62 acres of my property. And there's other people here tonight that are going to request the same thing. They don't want to be annexed in. So we're, we're requesting that you honor our wishes under our constitutional laws that you recognize tonight. So, thank you very much. Am I on there?
What was your address again, sir?
290 Orange Avenue.
290 Orange Avenue, yep. I'm between Fifth Street and, between Fifth Street and Romell Road.
Okay, we'll let her, she'll organize. Can we move on to the next item?
Yep, yep. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Raphael.
Dorta.
Dorta, is that correct?
You'll excuse me, this is the first time I've been to one of these things.
Just state your name and address, please.
Raphael Dorta Figueroa, 275 Grape Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I've been in that house now for, I think about 15 years. I don't really want to be part of the city. I don't ask for anything from the city except for the water, and it was there before I got I believe in the constitution. I was a soldier also. Okay. And I don't see how I can be forced to be just overtaken. Sounds more communist. I would like to be taken off this list if I'm even on it, because I'm not sure I'm on it.
Am I? 275 Grape Avenue.
Do you have anything else to add?
That's all.
All right, thank you.
Will I find out today if I'm on it or not?
I don't think, I remember reading about a Grape Avenue.
I hope not.
William Edson, is that correct?
Folsom.
I'm sorry. I know who you are.
Yeah, you do. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Can't read your writing.
My name's William L. Folsom. 705 South Canoe Creek Road, Keenonsville, Florida. I lived in Narkuzzi and been in business in St. Cloud for 44 years now. We've prospered, we've been blessed, we've grown, we've raised children. Now we're raising grandchildren. Through the grapevine, the week before last, I learned that I may be on a possible list of, y'all want to annex my property, my commercial property at 25, 27, and 29 East 13th Street, the Folsom Services Building. I can't see any advantage to me being annexed. I've got along fine in the county. I do have your water. I pay 125% of the value for that water. I have a drain field and a septic system in, and it was necessary to do that when I developed that property because the people that were in St. Cloud at that time were less than kind to me. I had to have civil engineers help me and I had to have attorneys help me to get through this very difficult process. I'm an electrical mechanical contractor, so I don't know quite how to fight those kind of battles. But we got through it and we did fine. I get along fine with you folks. I help the community when I can. I'm always involved in helping children. I help 4H kids, I help the anglers. I serve on the, as a vice president on the board at O-Tech and have for many, many years. And I'll continue to serve as long as the Lord keeps me here. So what I would like to know is if you did annex me and am I on that list, how would it improve my world?
Do you have any other questions?
Well, those were the, the biggies. Am I on the list and how would it improve my world?
All right. Anything else?
I believe, I believe Mr. Folsom is, is on the list. He's the, the commercial property on 192.
Yeah, you're on the list.
Industrial, I'm an industrial enclave. How is it going to improve me if you annex me?
All right, do you have any other questions?
No, I think that's a pretty good one.
Your time's up, okay? You said we'll talk about, okay? We're going to talk about that right now.
Wow.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Oh, there's a Philip Orlansky. You're on Grape Avenue also.
Yeah, my name's Philip Orlansky.
Would you state your ad, name and address, please?
My name's Philip Orlansky. I live at 238 Grape Avenue.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know for sure. I never got a letter. I'm not, don't know for sure if my property's involved in this, but I really would like to prefer to stay in the county. I've been there for 42 years. I built the house myself. I don't really want to annex. My kids have grown up there. Everything's been just fine the way it is. We haven't asked the city for any services and I would really prefer to stay just the way we are. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address for a record and make sure and fill out a form, please.
Charlene Beam, 103 Lakeview Drive here in St. Cloud. I think it would be beneficial, because I keep hearing it, and the reason I'm here, I don't know if I'm included in the annexation either. So either it needs to be clarified for a large group of people or, you know, I, because there's many of us that don't know. Am I there or am I not? And it's unfair for her to sit here and, you know, try to bang through it. And many people aren't here that don't even know. This is word of mouth for me. That's it.
Thank you.
Henrietta, can you go back slides to the map, please? I think that would help everybody.
I think she just answered my question. Mr. Davis, are you? Yes, I'd like to know where a person can get a list of everybody that's getting annexed or which properties they're looking at. Where does a person find that? It was part of tonight's agenda. Well, if it's, if it's on the full agendas. It's on the full agenda. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Manzares, do you have anything?
Oh, no.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the audience, from anyone that hadn't spoken? If not, this time, we'll have discussion and/or motions from council. You want to talk to this?
Sure. Did we send out notices? I mean, it seems like there's a lot of confusion.
Dagmar Isagara, yes, we did send out notices, but no, we did not send the buffer. We only sent notices to the people that were affected for the annexation. So if they did indeed receive a notice, it's because they are in the list.
All right.
So I, I just have a thought while I hear a lot of people. So the mayor and I lived through this back in 2018. Actually, there was way more people than there is here tonight. I'm just wondering, I know at the time, we had a lot of people, when they developed their property, they signed paperwork that said, you know, they would annex in the future. And maybe the property sold and maybe the new people don't know or whatever. But I was just thinking while I'm sitting here, you know, we've got people who've lived here 40 years or however long and, and they want to stay in the county. Is it possible, and this question's maybe for Mr. Manzares, is it possible to bring them into the city at the time their property sells? You know, so it's not, the people that live there are not coming, you know, but, but when the property sells, then they would come into the city. I don't know, I'm just asking the question because then it's like the new, it's not affecting the people that have been there and lived there.
Well, you could do that. I think we'd want to enter into, back up a little bit. So the, of course, what you're referring to with regard to people that sign a document in the past, those are the encumbrance ones that are required by code. So typically, individuals that receive water or sewer service and/or sewer service from the city, they have signed an encumbrance at some point. So I'm not sure if any of the properties that are on the, on tonight's part of this agreement have encumbrances, some may, some may not.
I think a lot of the ones, just from looking at the map, that were in the green batch, those folks that are all along the road there, they had all signed encumbrances, I remember, from the 2018.
Right, exactly. So, to get to your question, I'm sorry, but you could, if the council wants it, we could work on a specific encumbrance agreement that was that, for those folks who haven't signed one already, that basically says you agree to annex, but the annexation won't happen until your property changes hands.
Well, they won't sign that, I don't think, right? Because they don't want to annex.
Well, no, but the option is like this, you know, this annexation that's before you is completely permitted by Florida statutes. It's to address enclaves and address service areas. It is a planning tool that the county and the city have been working on for 10 years now.
Right.
To basically deal with it. It's, it is something that has happened in a lot of communities as the communities have developed over decades to address it. So the city had council, and this city council, if it decides not to do this now, but any future city council has the absolute legal right to adopt, to annex these enclave pieces with, by agreement with the county, regardless of whether these individuals have signed out encumbrances or not. So I thought what you were suggesting was as an option, you know, we, we can delay it until some point in the future.
Well, I guess I was just thinking, if we have the power to say yes, they're annexed, why couldn't we say yes, they're annexed when the property sells?
For every one of them?
Yeah, if we were going to move forward with it. But I also am of the opinion, I know it'd be nice to clean the maps up and whatever, but it hasn't really, I, to my opinion, I'm sure police and fire all have a different feeling, but I think we provide the services, we handle it. The frustrating thing has been for me is like we'll go through this process, but then the city wanted to go and cherry pick annexations, creating enclaves, to me. We never moved forward with it, but the city has wanted to do that, where I was like, well then why did we spend all this time trying to clean up these, but then we're willing to go like up in an Narkuzzi area or whatever and like cherry pick development that we want to bring into the, to the city? So, I mean, I know back in 2018, there was a pretty gloom and doom scenarios represented that, you know, fire wouldn't get to the, the folks and police couldn't get to them. But I mean, I, I, it seems like that we were able to manage it.
Well, I was here in 2018 and we gave a four-year extension to those names that I think are on that list there. And the, and the decision that we made is at the end of four years, it would be brought back for annexation. I understand people not wanting to have to pay any more money on taxes and being annexed may result in that. But the problem is, all of you are riding on city roads, roads that are maintained by the city. You get on a turnpike exit, I'm sure most of you do from time to time, that the city taxpayers have invested several million dollars in. You call EMS, or if you do have to call EMS or fire or police, our city will be the one who will respond first almost always because we're closest to you. And the city taxpayers pay their salaries and maintain the fact that we can provide those kinds of services and maintain your safety and your security and hopefully your health. We offer parks that are used by many of these people, I know for sure, they've told me they have. And our parks are maintained, paid for, upgraded, made available to families and children and grandchildren by the residents of our city who pay those taxes. The, when there's a storm, our whole city is mobilized and you, you have no idea how much work is done behind the scenes as the, as the city staff. Sometimes the entire city staff deals with flooding issues, storm issues, and our city residents pay for those people to serve. That impacts all of you too. And so if you're going to drive on our roads, use our EMS, our And so if you're going to drive on our roads, use our EMS, our fire, our police and benefit from those services, go to our parks, get on the turnpike, then you should have an investment in having to help pay for that as well as to maintain that. And so that's my, my frustration with this. I, you know, I don't want to pay any more taxes either. But then if I'm going to benefit from those services, then I should have to have an investment in that. And I've had many residents who have certainly heard about annexations in the past. They said, well, you know, they ought to have to pay just like everybody else because you are technically in the city. Mr. Fletcher, Councilman Fletcher.
This is, this is a tough one. My, my family went through the same thing when we were growing up. We, you know, had tract of land that we grew up on and then, you know, we ended up having to go through the annexation process. And, you know, it wasn't a good time. And, you know, my, my folks were pretty vocal about it as well. It's tough sitting up here because not only do you make a decision, you know, for your folks and, or for you guys in, in your land, but I do have to echo the same comments as, as the mayor in, in this particular instance because the adjoining properties are paying for the service to, to, to your property as well. You know, if, you know, we, if you do call 911, you know, we are going to respond. Like you don't want deer run or Hickory Tree or, or wherever to respond, you know, it takes time. And we don't, we don't want that. So th- those are my comments. So I, I would echo the same comments as the mayor at this point.
Councilman Urban.
Yeah, I certainly understand where the residents are coming from. It's never an easy process. It was always kind of weird to me coming into here that we have little pockets within our city that are in the city. And so I, I have always wanted to clean this up so we have a defined city and a defined boundary. And I, I think that I would just reiterate what Mayor and Councilmember Fletcher said, that all, all these city services are already servicing these, these properties. So I do understand the, I do understand that the feelings, but I, I think that this is, it would be irresponsible for us, us not to bring these into the city.
Do we have any other discussion? Could I entertain a motion that we approve this annexation here? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Urban, a second for Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
And it passes. Brings us to item number 12. Madam Clerk, please read that in the rec, rec, please.
Public hearing for resolution number 2024-124R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for a place of worship in the residential dash two, R dash two zoning district on the 1.69 acres known as JJCC Assembly of God Church, located at 1406 Eastern Avenue as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin. Sorry, I'm helping residents. The case before you tonight is for a conditional use request for a place of worship for the project known as JJCC Assembly of God. The existing zoning is residential R2 and the future land use is medium density residential. The proposed use of a place of worship is permitted as a conditional use in the R2 zoning district. The applicant is proposing a 5,395 square foot building to hold Sunday morning services and evening services on Tuesday and Wednesdays. The site has an existing approved conditional use permit for a place of worship and school. What the applicant is proposing is to construct a new building that will be used solely as the place of worship, and the existing structure will be used solely for the school. And they will continue to hold classes on Monday through Friday for the school. The applicant is requesting to reduce the number of seats from 324 to 284 in the newly constructed building. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and zoning maps depicting the medium density residential land use and the R2 zoning district for context. Here is the concept plan submitted by the applicant. I would just like to point out that this conditional use does not approve this site plan. They still would have to go through the site development process. This is just only for context in a conceptual nature. Staff recommends approval of resolution 2024-124R with the following conditions. And I'd like to correct for the record that we, we would like to amend condition number one to state the main auditorium of the newly constructed place of worship shall not have more than 284 seats because we thought the word expanded was a little misleading. And condition number two is the existing school shall not have more than 120 students, which was approved as part of the original conditional use. And the third condition is the approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute approval of the provided concept plan. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan and any additional approvals required by the LDC. And finally, the last condition of approval that staff is recommending is for as long as the use permitted hereunder continues in the event that stacking or standing of vehicles encroach into the public right of way or otherwise interferes with the flow of vehicular traffic as determined by the city, this resolution may be brought back before the city council for review and consideration of additional conditions to, to address traffic issues or possible revocation of the rights granted hereunder in perpetuity. On August 20th, 2024, Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions. Likewise, it is requested that city council approve resolution 2024-124R with the conditions as I stated earlier, for a conditional use permit for the project known as JJCC Assembly of God. And at this time, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening. Bruce Taylor, B. Taylor and Associates of 131 East 13th Street. We agree with, with all the conditions and staff recommendations and also the planning council's conditions. Here to answer any questions, if you have any.
If you'll step to the side, we'll have some public comment first and then there might be some questions.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, are we speaking to this item?
Can I?
Yes, you may.
I haven't filled out a form. My name is Patricia Folsom and I live at 705 South Canoe Creek Road, Keeneland, Florida. But our property, which y'all are trying to annex, is right next door to this. There is a traffic problem, a severe traffic problem with the school that's there now. And every, I mean, they're parked on three sides of the building. So as I understand it, this new building is going to be, is going to be south of the existing building? Yes. Okay, south, okay. Where are they going to park all their cars for these meetings? Because they only own land like one block back and the existing building, their, their people park in the parking lot. And if this building goes where their parking lot is, where are the people going to park? Is there any, any plan for where they're going to park? Do they have more land than, than what I see?
Ma'am, could you?
I'm sorry, do they have more land than what I can see existing on their property right now?
Okay, do you have any other questions?
That was it. I want to know.
Thank you very much. Applicant's on his way.
Again, Bruce Taylor, B. Taylor and Associates. That's how we came up with the size of the existing bill, or sorry, the new building is, there's 71 parking spaces that are on the south property and also surrounding the other building, which is onsite street parking. So we have 71 spaces, or 71 parking spaces multiplied by fours how we come up with the 284 spaces for the new building, which is actually a reduction of about 40 or 50 people that require. So we're actually reducing the amount of traffic in that area. It's just going to be, it's going to be spaced apart. So you're going to have, the traffic for the school will be at one time and the new traffic, which will be for the, for the church, which will be less parked, less traffic than is currently occurring. So overall, we're going to be reducing the, the traffic. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Mr. Folsom?
Yes, thank you.
State your name and address, please.
William L. Folsom, 705 South Canoe Creek Road, Keeneland, Florida.
Thank you, Ms. Folsom.
Own the property adjacent to 25, 27, and 29 East Canoe, East 13th Street. We've had considerable amount of confusion with parents dropping off and picking up kids. When I'm trying to pull industrial vehicles, semis, big trucks, small trucks, vans, pickups, what have you, this is, this is where we do business, is on Eastern Avenue. And we've asked them to work with us and they tell me they have rights. And I'm like, you know, if you pull a 40-foot trailer out there, you got to swing pretty good. I don't want to hit your car. And this has been of considerable confusion in the past. If they're going to have another area, are they going to continue to plug up Eastern Avenue? And that's a genuine concern of mine. And I think you guys, if you were sitting in my spot, you'd be thinking, hmm, how's he affecting this guy's business? He's trying to make a living in a tough economy right now. Questions for me, maybe? Happy to answer, work with you any way I can.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Darren Davis, Secretary Road. I do business in that area too, with the farm and ranch store and stuff. And I went down there to go take a truck trailer in, pick up hay and stuff. And you can't get the people out of the middle of the road to get to the business. We have a habit, we go down one more street and then come down 14th Street so we can go straight into the approach to the store. They're parked in the middle of 14th Street and you can't get around them. And needless to say, they ain't going to move. If they're there to pick up their kid, they're going to sit there in the middle of the road until they come out. It's the same thing at all schools. Michigan Avenue has the same problem. Hickory Tree has got a major problem with it. They park in the middle of the road and I can't get out of my driveway because they're backed up all the way to Nolte. And that's morning and afternoon. If it rains, you can't go nowhere. But this one here does have a problem on both streets, eastern and the next one over, which is Mississippi, I think. And the cross streets are the same way. They wanted to close the cross street in the middle at the last time they come forward. And the people stood up and said, no, we need that street. And I don't think they should close any streets one block off of 192 or any of them that people use all the time. All right, thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Reverend Dr. Norma Barbosa, 1418 Mississippi, sorry, 815th Street. We just moved over in St. Cloud. We're right across the street from the school. It's a pastoral chamber. We've been there for 12 years. I've been pastoring there approximately that time. The school is 10 years old. At first, when it first began and opened, as Pastor knows as well, Mayor Blackwell, he has visited us. We, our entry to our small academy at that time was in the entry across the street from Folsom, where they have a business across the street. And yes, there were, there were some issues with dropping off. That was our first entrance. That was one year. Then we proceeded to change the entrance to the academy on Mississippi Avenue so we didn't have any congestion, didn't work. Right now, in this present time, our entrance to our academy, because we're trying to expand and make the school bigger to 120, we're at 90 students right now, is off of 15th Street. That allows for no congestion. Our entrance to the school is approximately within 15 minutes. Parents get there at 8:50, drop off their kids, 9:10, 9:15. The only congestion that is on or around that area that is due to our school or academy, Christian academy that's serving that community is approximately 20, 30 minutes in the morning and 20, 30 minutes in the afternoon between 2:50 and 3:15. So there shouldn't be any congestion. We've approached this with the police department several times. And I really do respect businesses that are around there. I understand it's commercial, also it's the county, and we've been very respectful. What we're trying to do now is expand the school, but still continue to worship on Sundays. So the parking, the traffic should not be an issue. And if that were the case in the future, we would be the first ones to come back and say that we need to do some modifications. I don't know if anyone has any questions for me? We've been there 10 years, the school is 10 years. We've had minimal complaints, mostly because of the, the tractor trailers and all that. I've had many complaints. We have tractor trailers in front of our building, but we've made changes, modifications to our school to accommodate all these businesses that are around us. We have the feeding place with, yeah, the owners and we've spoke about it, our expansion. We don't want to step over anybody's shoes or, you know, just damage anybody's business. We're here to work together, especially because we're a Christian facility. We want to just make sure that our community grows. We are serving families that walk to our community. We're bilingual, we speak two languages and that is what differentiates us from different private schools. So, I wasn't going to speak, but I felt the need that I needed to come up and say these words. But again, the congestion, the traffic only happens in the morning, approximately 20, 30 minutes, and in the afternoon, 20 or 30 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you fill out a, did you fill out a request to speak for him, please? If anyone else that'd like to speak to this hasn't spoken? If not, we will have discussion in our motion by council. Council, Mr. Manzares, that's your light going on first.
Well, I just wanted to remind the council, as Ms. Dunklin pointed out in our presentation, there's a specific condition in this CUP that deals with the, basically the obstruction of the right of way in the area, the stacking issue and all that. And if there is a problem with that, then the applicant is agreeing that the city council could come back in and take a look at this and make any changes or even revoke the conditional use permit.
Thank you. I don't know who had the light on first, but we're going to start with the ladies first.
Oh, shoot, I was hoping.
Councilmember Matheny.
So, a lot of thoughts on this. So, I was here when they came in the first time and we gave them, the mayor and I were here. And, you know, I went to the site and visited. It's a great facility and they're doing great work and, and all that. And at the time, they had asked us to close the cross street and they also wanted grass parking, which we allowed them to keep grass parking. I remember the mayor was like, well, I have grass parking and we don't have any problem with. I remember that specifically, but, and so it's great and.
Are you throwing off of my grass parking?
I'm throwing off your grass parking. So, I look at the site plan and I think, there's no way this can work. I mean, to me, it's like, the whole open area is now going to be taken up with a building. The parking is strewn as grass, which there's no way, I mean, I would approve it now if we're going to do all this development. But I just don't see how this would work. And I know we have the language that Mr. Manzares talks about, that they can come back. The reality of it is, are we ever going to take something away from a church that we, they built a whole building? What, what can they do to change their site? There's only a little scrap of like non-building to me. Like, there's really not going to be anything. I, I mean, I'll ask Ms. Dunklin, I mean, are we proposing that this meets every single standard of our land development code? Because that can't in my, in my mind, like, it just doesn't look like there's enough space. It's a lot of building, it's not much pond, very few parking spaces. You know, in like the stacking requirements we put on every other school, I just, I just can't imagine this meets it. I feel like it's, maybe they need to find a different site. I feel like it's, maybe they need to find a different site. Kind of my thoughts on that.
That is correct. So when they submit their site development plan, they will have to meet all of our land development code requirements. Otherwise, they'll have to either request variances and either come before the Board of Adjustment or City Council, depending on what type of variance that they would be requesting.
So this has, the site plan that we're looking at hasn't been reviewed for any conformance with?
No.
Yeah?
No, it's only conceptual in nature at this point.
Again, I'm not a fan of approving stuff with, without having it completely, like, vetted. I just can't imagine how this would work with most of the site being a building. I just can't imagine.
No, ma'am. Well, you're an applicant. Come on, I'll let you speak. You're an applicant.
I think that you're just looking at the parking lot that's inside that one property. There is parking lot all around the front of the building, of the existing building. That's across the street from Folsom and all the business, you know, back and forth. There, that parking was made for the same reason. So that parking has been added to it. So again, we've gone through the whole planning, and that's why we're here asking for it, because it shouldn't, shouldn't be a problem. Because the parish, there is two-hundred-and-eighty-four, maybe less than, there's less than three-hundred people. Right now, we don't have an issue right now. We parking all the way around, and again, because there's no school. So I think they're not looking at around the building already and around the areas that are there. So if you look at the site completely, there are already parking lots that haven't accounted for, that can be used on Sundays and on Tuesday nights.
Okay. What you need to understand, what you got now is not the issue. It's what you're trying to propose is gonna have to go through a review process, and you're gonna have to meet all of the standards that you may not qualify for now. So just keep that in mind, okay?
No problem. Thank you, thank you for your.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Well, this is a tou- a tough one. We, we talked about eastern being a, a road that we really wanna expand in the future for industrial. And with that, with trucks and tractors pulling in and pulling out, there's gonna need some easement agreements. And I, I looked at the floor plan, and it just doesn't fit. It, it just doesn't. And I love houses of worship. I, I do believe in the Folsom building. They do have a house of worship that they lease out to, to, to a church, and they have plenty of parking for that. I love churches, I love worshiping God. I just don't know if this is gonna fit with us wanting to look at eastern being an industrial road to, to, to do that, the corporate industrial buildings back there with our new GP, JPA and our new agreement of what we're gonna put industrial on. That's my toughest part. I'd love to see a church on every corner. Where I grew up, there was a church on every corner. Everyone walked to church, and it was a different time and era. But I just don't know if it fits with this plat. And I yield back to you, Mayor.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Well, my comments have all changed now. It's almost kind of like the cart before the horse. Because you're requesting the conditional use approval, and then you have a concept plan that may or may not actually, we could approve it, but then you could potentially end up with half of what you're trying to, to build. Is there a way, I mean, I'm sure they went to a pre-development meeting. Is there a way for them to, we couldn't review it before they submitted an application?
The city council could, just like you required the other project, you, you could have them come back with a site plan prior to approving a conditional use. I'm sorry, I'm not the attorney.
Just stated how they in once, I know. Should I turn my light on to say what she said?
You have something to say? Yes.
What she said.
Because I was gonna make, I was gonna make a motion with, with conditions, but the site has so many restrictions, like, they're so restricted now. So I would be in favor of continuing it, so that it, you know, doesn't get denied, and then you're, it's over. At least give you the opportunity to bring back a site plan that is to code, so that you guys can at least move through that process and hope that you can get it approved. If not, then it's gonna be tight.
Yeah, I would certainly recommend that you continue it. I mean, you could take a chance of those voting going, if it gets voted down, you can't bring it back for quite a while. Is that not correct?
That's not correct, that's correct. So just for clarification purposes, this is a conditional use permit application. Generally speaking, what a conditional use permit is, that it's a use that is not otherwise permitted in the zoning category that we're talking about. However, with appropriate conditions, it may be deemed appropriate or use, or acceptable in the area. So really, the only way you can get to the second part of that discussion is to have a really good understanding of what the, what the use is gonna be and how it's gonna operate, what the building's gonna look like, what the traffic flow's gonna be like, what the parking, all those issues that you typically can, can look at. So I think you're moving in the right direction on this one.
Yeah, I would certainly love to see this succeed, but you're gonna have to do it with the restrictions of our building code space, if you're bringing back a, an extension here. Any other discussion?
So would you wanna ask the applicant how long they'd like to table it for?
How long would you like to have for us, if we could, for this to be continued?
Well, we could always re-advertise it so that it can, we don't push the timeframe.
Well, you have a meeting next week, and I think that one's a little pre-venture for that. So you're talking a month, two months?
Well, we have an upcoming meeting October tenth. If you think you can get it done by then, can the staff handle that? I don't think the staff can, that'd be too big of a rush for the staff.
It's gonna really be up to the owner. I mean, the plan I could fix. I would really, if, the plan that I submitted is an abridged form of what was originally submitted, which showed the whole parcel. So that's why it looks like there's not much parking. If you, if you pull up the original plan that was in the original package, it shows the parcel in entirety, with all the parking around it. So like I said, we have seventy-one spaces that are existing, and we have the exact amount per code at four space, or four, four patrons per space.
Okay.
But if we need to table it, to work on it.
I'm trying to help you out here. You need to table this.
Yeah. So I would say.
November? Is that possible? All right?
Sure, November's fine.
Okay.
So table to November fourteenth?
November fourteenth.
That would be, that would be good.
Could I have a motion? We, I'll make a motion that we continue this item to November the fourteenth meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Could you please read item number thirteen into the record?
Public hearing for resolution number twenty-two-four dash one forty-five R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud of Osceola County, Florida pursuant to section one ninety-six point one nine seven eight subsection three subsection O, Florida statute, electing to not exempt property under section one ninety-six point one nine seven eight, section three subsection D, one dash A, Florida statutes commonly known as the Live Local Act, property tax exemption, providing for suburbility and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Manzares?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the item before you is what's being referred to as the opt-out provision to the Live Local Act. Back in twenty-twenty-three, excuse me, when the Live Local Act was adopted by the legislature, the legislature created a property tax exemption for the two levels of affordable housing that was designed for, that Live Local was designed for. They, the one that we're talking about tonight is the property tax exemption that would grant a seventy-five percent tax exemption to, to properties that meet the criteria of eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the median area income. In twenty-twenty-four, the legislature put a provision in that said that counties and cities could opt out of that exemption if certain criteria met. The criteria basically was that if there was a surplus of housing for that, that category of eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the median area income. Based on this, what's called the Schimberg Annual Report, Osceola County meets that criteria, and therefore, it's eligible, the city is eligible to opt out of the, out of that tax exemption. We're recommending that, that council approve that. The tax exemption is a fairly large tax exemption. It has a retroactive capability, goes back about five years. So it's, it, it has, it has the, the, the direct effect of basically taking away property tax values for services that the city has to provide for these developments. So with that, staff's recommending approval, and we can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have a discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Fletcher.
Sorry, Mayor.
Cutting your light off on me, can't do that. Would anyone else like to speak to that item? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of this recommendation?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban for the approval of resolution number twenty-two-four dash one forty-five R. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to council action items. The next items on the agenda are ordinances before the council for first reading and introduction for the sole purpose of the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for a final hearing. The council will not take final action on any of these items tonight. Full presentations and public input on the ordinances will occur at the final hearing, which the council will consider final action. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number one into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-four dash fifty-six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus thirty-point-thirty-eight acres identified as Nova Road subdivision from R dash one, single-family dwelling zoning designation, to R dash one B, single-family dwelling zoning designation, with a low-density residential future land use designation, generally located east of Shaker Palm Place, west of Nova Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, suburbility and effective date.
Could I have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty-two-four dash fifty-six?
Motion approved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gilbert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number two, please.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-four dash fifty-seven, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, future amending the City of St. Cloud Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System adopted by ordinance number two thousand six dash one twenty-five, as subsequently amended, amending section twenty-eight Deferred Retirement Option Plan, providing for codification, providing for suburbility of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Could I have a rec, a motion for the adoption of ordinance twenty-two-four dash fifty-seven? If the mayor makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number three, please.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-four dash fifty-eight, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, future amending the City of St. Cloud Police Fire, sorry, Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System adopted by ordinance two thousand six dash one twenty-five, as subsequently amended, amending section six benefit amounts and eligibility, providing for codification, providing for suburbility of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Could I have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number fifty-eight?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could you read item number four into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-four dash fifty-nine, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, future amending the City of St. Cloud General Employees Retirement System, amending section ten, optional forms and benefits, amending section twenty-eight Deferred Retirement Option Plan, providing for codification, providing for suburbility of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
I would like to make a motion for the adoption of this first reading, ordinance number twenty-two-four dash sixty, or fifty-nine, is that correct?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, I'm sorry.
Second.
And we have a second, Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number five, please.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-four dash dash sixty, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, future amending the City of St. Cloud General Employees Retirement System, amending section five contributions, providing for codification, providing for suburb, suburbility of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of twenty-two-four dash sixty?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number six.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-four dash sixty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately plus minus seventeen acres located at fifty-six forty-five and fifty-six fifty-five Nova Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seventy-one point zero four, 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 Florida statutes.
Could I have a motion for the passing of ordinance twenty-two-four dash sixty-two?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher, a second from Councilmember Matheny, and Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number seven.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-two-four dash sixty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus seventeen acres identified as long residence from AC Agriculture and R dash one M, single-family residential county, zoning designation to A, Agriculture City, zoning designation generally located at fifty-six forty-five and fifty-six fifty-five Nova Road, providing for entering providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, suborbidity, copies on files, and effective date.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance 2024-63?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number eight.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2024-64, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately plus minus 17.13 acres identified as East Side Park, PUD, located at 1310 East 10th Street in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of chapter 171.044 Florida statutes.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of this ordinance, 2024-64?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Urban has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number nine.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2024-66, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter three Performance and Siting Standards, Article Six Commercial Zoning Districts, Sections 3.6.5.K. 6.8, and Chapter Four Site Design and Development Standards by adding a new article titled Article 10 Mural Art, providing for mural art requirements for certain non-residential developments and also includes applicability, suborbidity, conflict, codification, and effective date.
Could I entertain a motion for the ordinance number 2024-66?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And then finally, item number 10.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2024-67, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the City of St. Cloud General Employees Retirement System, amending section six benefit amounts and eligibility, providing for codification, providing for suborbidity of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the ordinance number 2024-67?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher, a second from the mayor, Blackwell. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Dr. Mazzares.
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Miller.
Yes, thank you. Staff let me know that they did go outside with the residents who were confused if their addresses were included in the enclave annexations. And actually, we believe the only person who attended this evening who was included was Mr. Filson.
Filson.
Filson, I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to clarify. They actually did send notices outside of just the people that were being annexed. They did include a buffer, which is, I think, what caused some additional confusion. Thank you. That's all I have.
That's it. Councilmember Fletcher.
I have two things. I had spoken to a resident regarding a sidewalk going across at the skate park. And I had spoken to Dave about it. And it appears that we're going to go ahead and do that. It's on the list of crosswalks or whatnot. So, I just wanted to let everybody know. And then, can we put up no parking signs on Russell for the folks? At least, because, I mean, it's bad right there.
I'm sorry, where is Russell?
On Russell in Michigan. Remember the development that came in on 17th Street? I had the opportunity to drive over there during school hours. And I could understand if there was some right of way to pull off of, but you literally can't get through if there's cars parked there. Are we able to do that? Maybe it'd be like five signs, four signs.
So, if there's consensus, I can absolutely do it. One, two, three.
You can do it on your own.
I thought we changed that to the police chief.
Well, but the police chief works for you.
Oh, okay. Yes, we will do that.
Awesome. Thank you. The neighbors will be very happy about that.
All right.
And it's the last... I mean, how many meetings do we have?
Somebody said two.
Two?
Don't, 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 not yet. Give me all water, yeah.
I need to bring tissues to them.
Yeah, you better bring a lot. I'm a water baby, Mayor. I'm a water baby.
Well, Mr. Gilbert, before you tear up, why don't you speak to us?
Well, you know, a great event's happening this Saturday at the Lakefront. There's a 5K walk run for a cancer patient, a young lady adolescent that passed away. And the folks rejoice in bringing people together and recognizing that for cancer awareness. And it'll be happening about 7:30 on Saturday. I will be there. I think Mr. Urban will be there also. We'll be cutting the ribbon, and I'll be walking. Colby might be running, but I would invite anybody in the public to do that. But what a great cause. And what a great thing that they take a tragedy and they turn it into a positive moment. So, that's all I have to say. I think this is a great city to live in. We went to two openings today. I went to one with you, Mr. Mayor, gymnastics opening in a building. They've already got 200 people. And the thing is, is St. Cloud has a great, great community with families and children. So, that was a great... And then also, there's a bakery that opened up in AmeriCenter that does over 700 pounds of bread a day. And it was so excellent to see. This community is growing. It's growing with families. It's growing with good people. And I'm just honored to be a part of this community, and thank you. So, wake up, show up Saturday, wear your long socks, and let's go running.
Can I bring oxygen for you?
You better bring a tank, because I'm going to need something.
I do not believe that.
Yeah.
You're the one will.
Councilmember Matheny.
Oh, okay. I just have two things. So, on Saturday, there's also... So, those of us that went to high school, is Jason still here? But we had to go... Oh, there he is. So, do you remember being in high school and you had to go, like, park cars out at an airport somewhere for Interact? And they just dropped you off with no water or shade or anything, and you just had to survive?
Swelter.
Sweltering. And then I never really remembered where the heck that was. You know, you just got dropped off in like a dirt grass parking lot and told to park cars, and no one listened to you, and then they picked you up eight hours later. Anyways, it's the Simi Airport. And they have started...[1582.51]